Good evening, welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Park Superintendent Peter Yu.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRTS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda, community announcements. Mr. Lab?
I have none.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda, open session minutes of January 21st, 2020.
Motion approved.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
That's a yes.
All right.
God, yeah. No, I get a, it seizes up on me. Doesn't work.
That's a first.
An injury.
It is. Injured on the job. Can I get my confidence? At least get half my salary.
All right, next on the agenda, under new business, we're going to pass over old business for now and go right to the alcohol license, change of officer for Porter's Pub, 363 Union Street.
Come right up.
Tell everyone who you are and where you live.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Sophia Lunes. I am sister-in-law to Catherine Porter and my brother Steve Porter for Porter's Pub.
Very nice. Is this a transfer?
Yeah.
Addition to, yeah.
Okay, having reviewed the paperwork, everything seems to be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on change of officer for Porter's Pub? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Best wishes.
There you go. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Class II license approval, the Hodge Auto Tray, 240 Center Route. Come on up.
Good evening, how are you?
You can sit. So this is the old B1 auto?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it was? Okay.
Oh, and I went through everything, Mr. Chairman. It looks like they had like a very successful meeting with the zoning board. So that was good to see. And Doug, it looks like they have fulfilled all, like, all of the requirements that we have.
Right, yeah, we're good. Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So I make a motion?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? It's unanimous. Welcome.
Welcome.
Wish you best. Thank you very much.
All the luck.
Do very well there, huh? Boy.
Okay, next on the agenda, Park Department update, Superintendent Peter Yu.
Good evening, Pete.
How are you, Peter?
Peter Yu, Park Superintendent, Rockland. Been there for a few years. A lot of people know what we do, some people don't know what we do. We actually cover over 113 acres in the town, cut and wise, sports fields, we've got 13 ball fields. We take care of the landfills, another 33 acres that we cut that. The guys I got are the best guys I can ask for. There's three guys that work with me and they're just top-notch. I save money hands over fist with just the mechanic-wise, 95% of our work's in-house. One good big thing that we just finished up was Veterans Stadium. A lot of people know that, some people don't even know where the Veterans Stadium is. A quick 30-second blip on that, in 1955, World War II vets coming home. How this all came about, the taxpayers were going to throw a shindig for the guys and they said, nope, build a new sports complex. That's how that came about and we just had it completely done over this past year, as we got left to some paving and little items like that. Hopefully we go another 65-plus years on that. I got three commissioners that, I see one of them every day, almost a pain in the butt. Thanks for being there, Joe. But they're non-paid and they're phenomenal, too. We also take care of the rail trail along with Dave Taylor from the highway, that's kind of a joint effort on the rail trail. That's about all I jotted down, really. Questions? Anything?
Pete, how's the department changed in the last 10 years?
It's come a long-
So it went from when it was-
It's come a long way. I started a few years ago and back in 88, 89, we got cut down from six guys down to two. Since then, we're back up to four of us. So we're there, but the only thing that has changed also is when I started up there, softball and baseball were in the spring, football soccer was in the fall. Now, every sport is year-round. So almost all our fields are combination fields. So that's one thing, that's a constant battle trying to keep this grass going and kicking. With this stadium project that we just had built, we had a garage, that was huge. We now work indoors, which is cool. But it's come a long way, especially in the past five, 10 years.
Pete, I just want to thank you. The work that you do with basically every other department in town has always really been amazing to me, whether it's the school department, the youth commission, or, you know, really across the board. You know, I mean, you work so well with people and it's really, I think, emblematic of our entire town government here and you really, oh, really have your pulse on everything, so.
That's a big thing. Like, Rich, I probably should have let into that. The last five, 10 years, we've come a long way, all the departments. We've always gotten along and everything. Like, I mean, Dave from the highway picks up the phone or somebody at the town hall here picks up the phone, they need some dust move or something. We all got to do this together and that's the only way it's going to work, period. And it's been, the last five or 10 years, it's, we've come way out, big time, not to mention all the things that tried to drag us down. We came above that, in a big way.
Agreed completely.
From my opinion.
Agreed.
Mr. Ryan?
The fact that everybody calls you Peter Park says it all.
Yep.
It's probably going to be on my rock. It should be, you know? Because you've done a great job. As long as I've been around, you've been here and-
Well, we try. And again, like, you're only as good as the people you work with and, you know, you can come up. My guys love to, especially when we get into the football season and the Red Sox end up making it, my guys are out on the field in September putting Red Sox on the field in football season because they care. They care a lot. And we got it, we all got it, you know?
Pete, do you guys help out on the plowing?
Oh, yeah. Along with, most usually, we shut down, you know, field-wise, November, Thanksgiving, irrigation system's blown out, play with leaves. This winter's been great. We're outside today, this is, I hope it keeps up. But we also, along with that, we do all the sanding with Dave Taylor and the guys and plowing and, you know, I do the town buildings myself and they do the rest of the town with Dave, so.
So Pete, you've mentioned the last five to 10 years. Where do you see the department going over the next five to 10 years and what does the department need from us as far as, you know, any specific articles or budget requests?
We keep going this way. We've gotten approved for a couple trucks this past year that we should be getting them in any day now. Tractor-wise, we're just, we need one tractor and we'll be good to go there. We should be fine with vehicles for quite a few years. And now that we have a garage, it's going to make a huge difference. They were stored outdoors, you know, and now we can, we come in from sanding or whatever and the salt's all over and we hose them down and throw them in the garage. It's a big difference right there.
One other thing, just, so obviously with some of the things going on with the Article 97 land transfer, so Park's going to pick up several acres that they didn't have and then depending on what happens at Hartson, there's another. Are you going to be able to absorb this additional?
I'm pumped about that. I'm pumped about that. That's one of been, one of my little pet peeves of wanting to see Hartson Park, almost like a little mini Camp Kawani in Hanson. Not that we're going to be building cabins all over the place because it's, a lot of it you can't build, but a lot more trails, a lot more, if we can get in lean-to's. The scouts, girls and boys both use it now. We've got Gene from the youth commission hosts reunions, family reunions up there, things like that. And it's, I don't think it's going to be huge, tall in a budget whatsoever. I think it's going to be more trail-wise and just outdoors. Just, it's not going to be, it's not like we can build ball fields out there, you know, along with, between that and Reed's Pond, Doug's been huge with helping us with Reed's Pond. I can't wait to see that, back to what it used to be before I was born, with the fountain out front and kayaking or boating or whatever else and having that wall redone. And there's a huge, huge things coming up, I hope, you know?
I just have one question. You said 95% of the work you do in-house. What type of projects are you outsourcing that you're not able to do?
If we run into a problem with, I'm talking mechanic-wise, if we run into a problem where, two of my guys that I got down there are just ace mechanics. If they tell me straight out that this is beyond us, then it goes to, you know, an auto shop or a diesel shop or whatever, but 95% of it, like I said, one of my guys had, one of our 2006 tractors ripped apart a couple weeks ago because of the gearing. And this is what we do in the winter. If we don't rip everything completely down, well, not this far down, this scared me. We don't have time in the spring, in the spring and the fall, or spring and summer for down machines, so, but he had this thing ripped down and said, yeah, we need this gear and these bearings, da-da-da-da-da. I said to him, I said, don't go die on me now because duct tape is going to fix this. But that's what I mean by 95% in-house. We do all our own mechanic stuff and all our own work, the bulk of it.
Yeah, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Thanks, Peter. Appreciate it.
Happy birthday to your daughter.
Yeah, happy birthday, y'all. Thanks for taking me early, too.
Yep, no problem. All right, next on the agenda, Water Department Superintendent Joe Appoin.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome.
For those who are going to read this, that's all right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Joe Appoin, Superintendent of the Avenue and Rockland Joint Water Works. I've been employed with the Water Department for the past 27 years. I was promoted to Superintendent in July 2019. Just a little background on the Avenue and Rockland Joint Water Works. In 1885, the town of Abington, South Abington and Rockland purchased the rights to a two-acre Great Sandy Bottom Pond in Pembroke for the purposes of supplying water to the towns for fire protection and domestic use. In 1886, a construction committee from both towns was set up for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a joint water works. This was approved by the General Court of the Commonwealth of Mass. At this time, construction of a pumping station and a 16-inch transmission main began from Great Sandy Bottom Pond in Pembroke through the town of Hanson to Beach Hill in Rockland. In March of 1897, an act was filed for the purpose of charges and expenses of the maintenance and operation of the joint water works. It was established that a joint board consisting of three water commissioners from the town of Rockland and the town of Abington shall award and determine each year a fair and just portion of the charges and expenses to the joint water works. This was approved by a two-thirds vote by each town meeting in March of 1897. Currently, the Avenue and Rockland Joint Water Works consists of two surface water supplies, the Great Sandy Bottom Water Treatment Plant in Pembroke, the Hannigan Water Treatment Plant, Haring, Hingham Street in Rockland, and one groundwater source, the Witherell Merrill Water Treatment Plant on Myers Avenue, Abington. Surface water on the reservoirs provide 92% of our water and the groundwater wells supply 8% of our water. We currently have 21 employees at the joint water works. We have eight distribution employees who maintain the infrastructure part of the water system, which consists of meter reading, inspections, water main installation and repairs, hydrant installation and repairs, and general maintenance consistent with the distribution of the water supply. We have seven treatment personnel and a primary operator who run our treatment facilities, which consist of processing the raw water, treating the water, making chemical adjustments as needed, sampling, testing of the water, and keeping adequate storage capacity. Each employee must be licensed by the state of Mass with a water distribution or water treatment license. The joint water works operates 24/7, 365 days a year. We currently produce on average 2.3 million gallons a day to 2.6 million gallons a day, depending on the demand. We have a storage capacity of 5.4 million gallons of water, consisting of four water storage tanks and two underground clear wells. Combination of both towns, we service approximately 34,000 customers with 11,500 service connections. We also maintain approximately 126 miles of water main and just over 1,700 fire hydrants. Just concentrating on the town of Rockland, in 2016, we started a $3 million water main replacement project. We replaced all the water mains, gate valves and hydrants in Phase One, which included Myrtle Street, Summit Street, Exchange Street, Liberty Street, Christine Ave and Del Preet Ave. In Phase Two, we did the same on Bigelow Ave, Cliff Street, Wall Street, Glen Street, Larita Ave, Ward Ave, Stanley Ave, Warren Ave, Lavina Ave, George Street, Upper Liberty, Vernon Crescent and Central Street. Most of this work was done in conjunction with the Highway Department Road Upgrade Project, which saved money for both the Water Department and the town of Rockland. Future upgrades that have to be addressed for the town of Rockland, upgrades to older water mains, refurbish or replace the water storage tanks on Rice Ave, and upgrades to the treatment facilities. Also, water availability needs to be addressed. Right now on the horizon, we have some large-scale developments which need, which include Zero Pond Street, the 40B development with approximately 236 units, consisting of approximately 350 bedrooms, Lydia Square, the senior housing, and 40 single homes off of Concord Street. As of right now, the joint water works is near our permitted withdrawal limit. However, we applied to Mass DEP for an upgrade to our withdrawal permit, which will allow us to withdraw approximately 200,000 more gallons per day. I would like to thank all the employees of the Avenue and Rockland Joint Water Works for their hard work and dedication to customer service and the delivery of quality water to our customers. You're only as good as the people you surround yourself with and I'm lucky to have some great ones. I would also like to thank Doug, Jen, Elizabeth, and all the department heads for their help and support. It's great to have such hard-working and dedicated people to work with. It's my pleasure to call them my colleagues.
Very nice, Doug.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'm sure?
I don't have any questions. First of all, Joe, I just want to say welcome and welcome to the role.
Thank you.
Oh, and congratulations on the role, I think. Oh, you know, I think, as you mentioned at the end, where we are in terms of, oh, you know, the challenges that we have in terms of the capacity, but also, like, I think the opportunities we have, like, as Rockland and Abington, as like a region right now, with, like, everything happened, I think it's really exciting. And, you know, I think, I mean, just from everything I've heard and how with how you've, oh, really been working with the town, working with Doug and Jen and, oh, like, and really going at it together, has been very exciting. And, oh, like, and all that work has been on top of the work you've, oh, you know, but you and your staff have had to do with water main breaks, the one on Beach Hill the other day, and, oh, and all the other stuff you guys do on a regular basis, so.
That one on Beach Hill, that's the transmission main that was put in in 1886, so it's 150 years old. It comes up, that's one of our main lines.
Original from that?
Yep.
Wow.
We're looking in, you know, you're looking into, you know, the engineer's estimated cost is anywhere between $50 and $100 million for that.
To run all the way back, wow.
From Pembroke to here. The state is looking at doing a portion of McQuan Street over, which is Route 14. We have been in talks with them. Actually, it's the same engineer and company we deal with. We're trying to, if they're going to do all this work to the road, you know, will you give us a little, you know, are you going to replace the water main and then not replace it and then have it blow up as soon as you do the road?
Yeah, all right.
Working with Route 18 in Abington, they actually replaced some water main from the Dunkin' Donuts at the intersection all the way up to Oak Street.
The state did?
The state did, of course. It was about $250,000. It didn't cost us a dime. I think it's wishful thinking that they'll, they'll help us, but if we can piecemeal a mile and a half of it, we'll only have five more miles to go, you know? Any little bit will help.
Do you have an ongoing meter changing program?
We do.
And we're supposed to call in and let you know to come down and change our meters?
We usually, what we do is if we have an indication of a meter that is giving us trouble and not working, we do send out letters, hopefully they call. The guys will leave a little red card in the door. Sometimes that gets some, you know, some input, but a lot of people just push it aside, you know?
Do you want to change all the meters?
You should theoretically, every 15 years, change the meter because I don't want to say it out loud, but they slow down, so that takes away our revenue.
There you go.
But it's limited, too. I mean, I can, I can, we put in an article for $50,000 and that only buys 250 meters, so, you know, you can only do so much a year. But we try to do anywhere between 200 and 300 a year.
Very good.
So you want, so, Joe, you mentioned about the request of the EPA to potentially draw another 200,000 gallons per day.
It's actually going to be a little more. Right now, our permit, which ran out in 2018, it was for 2.5 million gallons a day. We submitted for 3 million gallons a day. We have to save, indicate that we save or any developments like Abington High School, they built the high school, the underground drainage system, put so many gallons back into the ground. We're working in conjunction with the two sewer departments, the infiltration. If they can stop that, we get credit for gallonage for that. So as of right now, they sent it out for 30-day comment period. They have a public comment period on it. The draft that they sent out would give us up to 2.8, 3 million gallons a day till 2025. From 25 to 30, if we can say we saved another gallonage, we might possibly be able to get up to that 3 million.
You talked about the Rockland development, but where it's a joint water work. What's the impact in the future look for Abington and for their demand? Would this, would this, if this happened, would it meet it or would we still be in a-
For the short term.
For the short term?
Yeah. Right now, like I said, the projects that are waiting, basically waiting, they haven't been in front of the board at Zero Pond Street. We've been in contact with them. It's something we'd like to do. They actually petition DEP to put in wells on the site. DEP come back to us because it's so close to our reservoir on Hingham Street and legally we cannot deny them water if we don't put a water auditorium on, which we don't have right now, and which we probably wouldn't want to do because that would stop all future development. We are looking at other sources of water, the Old Fox's Pit, which might be too expensive to redo. There's Griffin's Dairy in Abington, we haven't researched putting wells in there yet. I live by Griffin's Dairy. They used to have an 80,000 gallon a day well for the farm.
Oh, okay.
So there is water there, but whether the, voted open space, so I don't know how that would work with us. Abington, they got a, I don't know if they're pretty well-built out. In the last four or five years, there's been a lot of development in Abington. They just got a big senior housing project going over there. There's 200 units trying to go in next to the train station. Those, all the projects that are out there right now, if we get this upgrade, we'll be able to do, and looking at the revitalization of Rockland Center, that's still on the agenda, too.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with Aquarian and the D-Sol plant?
No.
Okay.
No. Personally, just being involved in some of that, it's so expensive for them to run that plant and make the water. I think that's why Brockton didn't buy it and I have a feeling that's why, I don't know if anybody would be taking water from there. I mean, if anything, you'd think the Southfield would take it, you know? They could, they could transfer the water through Brockton, through a little piece of Abington to get to Waymouth, you know, a long range if they wanted to look to do that. I just don't think the plant's feasible to run, especially for us. I mean, it's an option long-term. If Brockton ever bought the plant or something, we could, you know, I mean, Brockton sells to Whitman and everybody else, so, I mean, it is an option. We are, we could relay water, you know? We are tied into the different towns. Like, we had that problem in July at the treatment plant. Waymouth gave us water for two days, you know? First week on the job.
So you brought up that problem from last year with the underground tank that had the leak. What's the, what's the status, the condition of the underground tanks?
The tank itself's fine. What it is, is it's a million gallon storage tank that's basically the basement of the treatment plant.
Yep.
We have three pumps on a lateral pipe that pump the clear water out into the system. The lateral pipe snapped off where it went out.
Okay.
So we had all three pumps, we had a full basin. We couldn't pump the water out of the basin with our pumps. We had, with the help of Scott Duffy, we had NEMA come down. They brought in two 8-inch pumps so we could, we had to pump out a million gallons of water just to get into the tank to fix the pipe.
And that was your first day?
Excuse me?
That was your first day?
First week.
First week.
Well, first, I mean, I've done the work.
Try by fire, huh?
Yeah. Doug and Jen, they were here, too. No, it was great with the help with Scott and, you know, the police department, you know, Doug and Jen and everybody, everything worked out well. You know, we got that plant up and running 24 hours, which the Rice Ave tanks went down to almost nothing. Then we got the water from Waymouth. We had to fill out an incident report for DEP and we got great, great marks on the report and they couldn't believe we were up in 24 hours, so it worked.
Now, you mentioned that there's been some, some good coordination between yourselves and the Highway Department.
Yep.
That, that I would hope, I would assume, would continue going forward. One of the issues that we had in the past was we would do over a road and then the next year, the Water Department would come in and say, well, we got to replace the mains.
Yep.
So obviously, you know, I guess my ask anyway would be to continue that coordination.
Absolutely. But like I said, we just put out the $3 million, we have to pay that back now.
Sure.
So it's going to be, the next project on horizon, the Rice Ave storage tanks, which last year, we did, we got money for the design. A couple years back, we had a feasibility study to see whether it's worth refurbishing them, replacing them, tearing two down and put one million gallon tank. We just got that report back, so now it's up to us to make the decision where we're going to go forward with that. It might be a couple years because the way it's looking now, it'll be $3 to $5 million, which, just getting into this position, I see how much we are out there in debt with the Water Department and it's really affecting my budget. I'd like to see if I can pay some of that down before I jump into-
Makes sense.
Things that, I mean, the tanks, hopefully, are not going to fall down, but the report we got, we have to do it every five years with DEP, and the report was that they'd last another five years, you know, so hopefully we get through that. Unless, I mean, we're always looking for grants, we're always looking for 0% loans. There's going to be some other issues coming down the line with some of these new chemicals DEP's requiring you to test for if they're in the water. You got to change all your treatment process. I'm sure a lot of Water Department's going to have a problem, so I'm kind of in the sit-back mode, waiting not to go broke. I'm sure a lot of water departments are gonna have a problem, so I'm kind of in the sit back mode, waiting not to go broke.
Oh, we are. Anybody else have any further questions for Joe?
No, thank you, Joe, so much.
Thank you.
All I wanted to say, Joe alluded to it, you know, we were both new in our respective roles when that almost catastrophic pipe broke, and I just wanna.
I think that was your first email, too.
Yeah, yeah.
To me.
Crazy.
Like, really, the new guy already?
Right. Without a, without a Teamsters trash, right? I'm not gonna talk about the other utility, but.
Yeah.
But the thing I want to thank Joe in particular was, he was calm as a cucumber, calm as a cucumber the whole time. I mean, he's a low key guy, but in addition, under like extreme pressure and weekends and nights, I just want to thank him especially for his just calm demeanor and just getting it done, so I appreciate his strong hand.
Awesome. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Congratulations again, too.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're gonna go back to old business, FY twenty-one budget.
So if I can take a minute, Mike, I'd like to turn on the projector and do it over here.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Can you see? Can you be able to see?
Yeah, I can read this too, sometime. Thank you though.
Nah, it'll work.
Alright, good. First, passed the first test. Thank you. So I, I wasn't really sure what the prior town administrator had done regarding budget presentation, so I just sort of took a stab at putting together something that I hope is helpful. I hope that it's not kind of too simple, or isn't too rudimentary for you, and I welcome feedback, and, you know, we can, I can do things differently as time goes on, just, please just let me know. As you know, we, well, actually, I'll start with the, with the outline slide. I'm gonna do a quick background, just go over the budget process a little bit. Like to talk a little bit about the seventy thirty split, do a overview of the budget, focusing really on just the general fund, not so much on the special revenue funds. Look at some issues we think that we need to pay particular attention to regarding the use of free cash. Quickly highlight staffing and then go over next steps. That's how we organize this. I want to thank all the department heads, you know, in addition to working closely with the accounting department, we've met with every single department to go over their budget. So that's been extremely helpful, I couldn't have done this without everybody's help. As you know, we, we presented a very preliminary budget back in December seventeenth, and that was based on a sort of artificial deadline in the, in the charter. And we highlighted then that, you know, it was very preliminary, one point seven million projected deficit at that time because of two main things. One, we were looking at requests we received from departments without any review of them, and we also did not bank or didn't include any potential state aid. We, you know, we just were really looking at the maximum sort of budget, very conservative revenue and expense assumptions. And the, the direction that we gave department heads was submit your budget request, but level service, we were not looking for more personnel, because we anticipated we'd be in deficit. So the process, as I see it, and, and again, feel free to add more to this or change this if you think it's appropriate. We began with the requested level service budget from all department heads. So again, level service meaning no increase in personnel, but obviously costs can increase for a variety of reasons. We then preliminarily added some additional expenses, which I highlighted back in December, and I'll highlight again in a moment, to, in our, in our opinion, kind of more prudently and appropriately budget for certain accounts. We then did a preliminary seventy thirty split calculation. This whole concept and the specifics of it is very new to, to Biz and me, so we took time to kind of go through the files and look at the other documents and make sure we were doing what we think the intent was. And then, once it was calculated, we took the time to meet with the school superintendent and business manager and review the calculation with them, so we're all on the same page. So that's how we came up with the preliminary budget. Then the governor's budget came out on January twenty-second. As we know, there's, new state aid numbers came out, assessments and, and revenues. So we revised the revenue assumptions, I think that's one, that's probably the one thing that's probably done, everything else is gonna really continue to fluctuate. So we updated the seventy thirty calculation after that, and then started getting into the budget to try to, try to solve the, the one point, originally one point seven million dollar deficit. So that's, that's the process we've been at so far. So the, the change in state aid, you can see on the education side about one point eight three nine million. So net, after you factor in the additional cost that comes to town, people often, when they look at increases in state aid, they only look at the revenue, they forget about the assessments or the charges. It's obviously appropriate to look at the net. So the net from the governor's budget was excellent for the town of Rockland, it came in at one point seven million in additional revenue. And one thing I was thinking about coming into tonight is, I think some people may incorrectly think, oh, this was easy, like, done, the governor solved it for us, because we had a one point seven million deficit, we got one point seven in new revenue, there we go, budget solved, done, but that's not at all how it works. Because as you know, there's the seventy thirty split, so when you end up taking, you know, this revenue plus the other revenue that gets factored into it, that's, this revenue, most of it, is just getting spent. So that's just kind of furthering the problem, that's not just being used to, to close the gap. So it's excellent that we got this revenue, that was critical, but after this revenue, we still had over a million dollar deficit. So that gets right into the seventy thirty split, which might be hard to read on the screen, but I, I know you have it in front of you. So the, again, the point here is, you know, our understanding of this concept is there's certain categories of revenue. Property taxes, new growth, et cetera, state aid, and we look at the change from year to year. But then, we also back out certain, excuse me, certain shared expenses, like retirement, health insurance, liability insurance, state assessments, et cetera. Because those things are shared across all departments, then we look at the net. So that net of all that was an increase in two point one three million dollars. Now, it's interesting to note, as, as we see the calculation, we believe this is correct, but when I look at some of the things, I'm not sure it really makes sense, because for example, outside of this are all the utility bills that we're paying for, including all the schools' utility bills, which are the majority of the bills, and that's an issue I'm gonna come back to later. So I, this is our understanding of what the agreement is, but I think there's parts of it we might want to revisit in the future. So this came to a, a net of two point one million in new revenue, this with the seventy thirty split, that's one point four nine million for the schools and six hundred and thirty-nine thousand for the town. So getting back to my earlier point, you know, understandably, the schools have a lot of needs, you know, they said, okay, they got their last year local contribution to their budget, they got another one point four nine million, but that wasn't closing the gap. So the, the, to summarize the, the numbers that are in your, in your packet. The preliminary budget we gave you back in December had that one point seven million dollar deficit. We've gone through, and I'm gonna highlight some of the things we've done, because I wanted to close the gap and present you tonight at least, you know, with a balanced budget. But I, I really want to highlight, this is, as you know, this is a work in progress, and since I emailed this to you, whenever it was, today or yesterday, I think we have two more versions we have, but I finally had to, you know, pull the plug on what I put in your packet tonight, but this is gonna continue to evolve, and I'll highlight a couple of things that, that we're gonna continue to refine. So what we, how we closed that, that gap, the following things we eliminated that were in our preliminary budgets. Remember, I spoke earlier about how we asked for level service, and then we, the administration, wanted to more appropriately budget for certain things. So these were all things that ideally we would do and we would fund, but we're just not able to afford it right now in the operating budget. So I'm just gonna quickly read them. A hundred thousand dollar contribution to OPEB. We do have a good balance in OPEB, but it's always prudent to add more, because everyone, every town's liability is massive, so we would have preferred to add a hundred thousand to OPEB.
Is that still adding at about four million for you?
The, the liability?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that, do you, Biz? What, what, he's asking what, how much the liability's rising each year in OPEB?
About four million?
Yeah, about four. I think we're at eighty million right now, so each year goes up. And, you know, be right, we know community, I'm not sure, well, city's gonna catch up to it, but.
So ideally, we would have contributed to OPEB. We would prefer to have an actual budgeted line item for contractual buyouts, because as you know, people retire, and there's contractual obligations that come as, as a result of that. I think generally, things get taken out of free cash for that. But I think a, a better practice would be to budget for it, since it really is recurring, we weren't able to, to do that. We were looking at including a, a snow and ice reserve, again, to try to preserve the use of free cash for other unanticipated things, not things that we can kind of predict, like, like snow and ice. Highway department, a hundred thousand dollars, while it's, while we asked for level service, there, we're not asking for additional people, but then the, the need for, especially the drainage work in particular, those responsibilities continue to increase. We, we had wanted to include a hundred thousand for that. So I, there's drainage and materials and hired equipment, so it's both pavement and drainage. So these were all things that were in our original budget, that helped contribute to that one point seven million dollar deficit, which we ended up cutting. The one thing that's in your document that we, that we were able to keep from our preliminary budget was an increase to the snow and ice budget. Now, I'm gonna get to this a little bit later, where I actually think this number now has to be lower, because something else has come up that we have to, this is one of the extra iterations I talked about earlier. But that is one thing that in the version you have, we were able to, to maintain. Next, I thought it'd be helpful just to show a couple of very simple pie charts, you know, essentially where our money comes from and where it goes. No surprise here at all, we're like every other town in this regard, but I thought especially for the people at home, if they're watching, this might be interesting. You know, the bulk of our revenue's coming from property taxes, the next biggest category is state aid, then followed by local receipts, debt exclusions, and other. Local receipts is generally dominated by the motor vehicle excise, as you know. And then similarly, again, not, not unlike most other similar communities, where our money goes, the biggest single category is education. That number, that twenty-eight point eight million, also includes the regional vocational technical school and the agricultural school, but the bulk of it's Rockland Public Schools. Then followed by, I guess the next largest number is benefits. Again, that's, you know, like every other town, you know, health insurance and retirement, et cetera, is, is significant. Debt service, public safety, public works, you know, all these categories dominate every town's budget. You know, unfortunately, things like human services and culture and recreation tend not to have as great a share, but we're doing our best with that. And property and liability insurance is, is always, is always a significant number, but that has to be, has to be funded. So next, going into the, the use of free cash, this is something I alluded to earlier. So there's, I think you all get the emails on when, when we get our free cash certified, so it was a little over two million, two million seventy-six thousand dollars. It's, it goes very quick, and I want to highlight, kind of the top half are things that we really have to do, the bottom half is more just illustrative, it's not, decisions haven't been made. But I just want to kind of show you like what a scenario looks like. So at the top, there's a couple of budgeted items that just need to be, have to be funded, so we really don't have any choice. You know, we're, we're short on Medicare and the collector's office, we're short on the expenses related to liens. I mentioned the contractual buyouts before, and while it's been a warm winter, a very mild winter, we have incurred a lot of expenses. You know, every time they're going out sanding, they have cloud. On average, it's around five hundred and seventeen thousand a year in deficit. And then on the, the budget shortfall also on, on trash. So these, you know, again, when I, when I get to that, when I was started with an earlier slide about wanting to kind of more appropriately budget certain items, that's so we're not in this kind of situation now or in the future. So that's, I guess, more of a long-term goal, we're gonna try to chip away at these things, but these are things we have to do, they total eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. So very quickly, our free cash gets down to one point two five million. So then we talk about two things that we recommend doing, and hopefully we're gonna be able to do. The, the holdback is essentially just setting something aside, so we don't spend every single penny of free cash, in case something unanticipated comes up and, and we're in a pinch and we need to, we need to have funds. And similarly, you know, the stabilization fund, it's, it's a best practice, you know, they, the recommendation, I think, is five percent. We're not close to that, I think this will get us up to around one point nine million Biz, right? This will get us up to over one point nine million, so that'll be, that would be good. So then that leaves us with nine hundred thousand. So I, what I, what I wanted to highlight here was, again, you know, the capital planning committee's still looking at things, they're still interviewing department heads. You have at the very back of your, so you have the PowerPoint in your packet, and then you have the detailed budget. At the very end of the detailed budget, I put another copy in of the, of the complete capital requests. And so you'll see that totals nearly three point five million. So all I have up here on the screen are some examples of things, you know, that could be priorities for us to fund. The final lease payment for, for a fire vehicle, a new mini fire engine. The next two are road repairs, a recycling center and Gardner Street, those just happen to be two that I've gotten a lot of feedback from the public, you know, desiring, wanting that to be done. The IT equipment upgrades, those are for computers, IT equipment, my understanding, that's, that's been a common practice, is to have that as sort of an outside article each year. Police station roof was on the, on the request list, as well as, I think traditionally, I'm calling this capital, but I think they've traditionally been outside articles to fund replacing police cruisers. And then the town capital projects, those are, we had appropriations in the past, and that's what I've been using to make repairs to town buildings that we've talked about earlier. So that essentially, in this example, that spends all of it, leaves a lot of things out, and I put in red on the left side there, this doesn't even include anything from the school department, because I haven't received school department capital yet. I'm sure I will, I'm sure it'll total several hundred thousand dollars, so that's gonna knock off several hundred thousand of this example I have here. So there's more work to do on this, but I just, I guess want to show that the free cash is gonna go quick, but we really don't recommend spending every penny of it, so that we can be a little more cautious. Then getting into personnel, you know, I just wanted to highlight again, you know, that there's no, no increase to town personnel, what we're proposing is a level service budget. As it relates to funding, you know, there's collective bargaining agreements for all our unions, so whatever those agreements are, we obviously abide by that, and all those numbers are, are plugged in for the union staff for their salaries. For department heads, it, there's a combination, there's, many department heads have multi-year contracts with future years to come, so we just plugged in those numbers, we'll live up to our contractual obligations. For now, and I italicize the word placeholder, for now, for all the other department heads that have contracts that are expiring, I plugged in a placeholder at two and a half percent. Looking at prop two and a half, seemed like a reasonable number as a placeholder, so we'll, we'll see how that shakes out, but no, no increase in personnel. So this is something I think's important for you to know, I've hinted at some of these independently in the past, but this is something I feel is appropriate, and it's my job to advocate for. And I'll probably do this every year, and none of these are included in this budget, we're not gonna get to do any of these in FY twenty-one, but just to kind of raise everyone's awareness of, of some of the needs that I think we need. I'm just gonna read them quickly, a facilities director, I've talked about that a bunch, a land use planner. And again, you know, we, we were just meeting recently with some commercial developers, looking to do some potentially interesting development in town, it's gonna require a zoning change. You know, they were on a, on a tight timeframe, and we just don't have the staff capacity to, to properly do something without rushing into it and potentially having negative impacts around town, we don't want to do that. So these are the kinds of things a land use planner could help with, for, for those that aren't as familiar with it at, at home, watching on TV. A regulatory admin assistant or coordinator. A regulatory admin assistant or coordinator. So that would be not the higher level land use planner, but somebody really just dedicated to those land use boards. We talked about this earlier, that could just intake applications, make sure they get to the right shares, make sure things get on the right agendas, be available for the customers, the applicants, to answer questions they may have. Because now, you know, they're all great volunteer boards we have. They're wonderful, but almost all of them have full-time jobs elsewhere and they're, they're not in town hall able to help with, with applicants. A human resources admin assistant, you know, I'm, I'm very fortunate that we have HR director, Stacy does a fantastic job, but the, it's almost like the, the better job she does, the more it sort of uncovers that, that needs to be properly done. And so an admin assistant for her would help free up her time for some of that higher level stuff and the admin assistant could take care of some of the other tasks that are just occupy a lot of time. Veterans agent, sort of similar thing. Vinnie does an outstanding job, but he, I mean, he does everything. You know, he's answering phones, he's doing paperwork, he's driving people around. I mean, it's, it's incredible what he gets done. One of the wonderful things, you know, with being at the senior center is they've started to really have a real synergy with the Council on Aging. So I think there's a real opportunity to share a part-time, somebody who's currently a part-time person at the senior center, turn that person into a full-time person and have that shared between the veterans agent and the senior center. So that incremental cost is only a part-time FTE. So that, I think, down the road could be a real improvement. And then both police and fire, this isn't just one matching the other, there's a rationale for why, but, but they would each ideally like, like two more line staff in each of their departments. So those are, those are long-term goals. We're not going to accomplish any of those now, but hopefully, I'll be here for a while and hopefully, over the years, we can start chipping away at these as the, as the budget allows. So next steps, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning, this is a working document. We're going to, we're revising this hour by hour as, as we get better numbers. One thing I should have mentioned earlier, because it's, it's just reminded me as I'm looking at that, one of the numbers that I think already needs to change is our line for utilities. We had it level funded and I actually think we're going to be short this year. I don't think it was adequately budgeted in FY '20. So that's to the tune of probably $65,000 that if I go back, actually, I'll just do it right now, if I go back to this chart here, where it says, you know, less budgeted Medicare shortage, less collector lien, I think there's going to probably have to be, less a shortfall in the utilities account for 65,000. So, and that's what I was alluding to earlier about taking out of that hundred thousand dollar increase in snow and ice. It'll probably have to come out of that for FY '21. That's just an example of how this is, we're continuing to refine the numbers. We'll keep working with the school department. I'm going to make sure to send Dr. Cron this presentation. I should get their capital request soon so we can plug that in, figure out what our priorities are. Work with the finance committee and the capital planning committee and any other committees I may not be thinking of right now. And then to, you know, continue to update you, and, and I thought it was important to try to put some dates in there. So ideally, what I'd like to do, so we don't have last-minute scrambles leading up the town meeting, would be to have you approve a final budget on March 17th and then sign the warrant and send it off to the printer on April 7th. That's our, that's my target. I'd, I'd like to be able to do that if we can. I'm happy to go into more detail. I know there's a lot of information here and I didn't give you guys a ton of time to look at it ahead of time. We can also do that at, at future meetings if you want to go through, you know, any particular departments. But that's, that's what I was prepared to show you tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Biz, did I forget anything or misstate anything? That's good. All right.
I'd have to say that was one of the better presentations we've had in recent years. Just being able to explain all that to, not only just to us, but to the people out there who, who, you know, worry about the budget, if you will, you know? Very well done.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yep.
So again, I don't, I don't think I have any real, like, action items tonight. I mean, I think as we get bigger policy decisions around numbers, like, should we do this or that? I'm, I'm going to bring those to your attention so you can decide, but we're, you know, every day, we're, we're focusing it more and more.
I have a few things. First of all, Doug, Alec and Biz and Jen, Alec and everyone, assuming John, oh, really job well done. I was one of, I was one of the people, Doug, as you know, who made a wise crack last night that basically the 1.8 million dollars just fell on your lap. And I know it's not that easy by any means and Alec, frankly, I mean, Alec, I know by this and all your, all efforts, all the work that has, Alec gone into this whole process over the last few months. I just have two quick corrections. Number one, Alec, in terms of, you know, Alec actually, oh, you know, acknowledging where we are in FY '21, Alec, and then the kind of, Alec envisioning where we would go in FY '22 as well, starting, Alec, at, Alec, 1.7 million dollars really in the red, do we have any idea, Alec, Alec, as of right, as of right now, what the schedule is for the new Chapter 70 implementation and whether we can really envision the revenues that we have seen this year continuing? Alec, I would just hate, Alec, I would just hate on our side, Alec, and frankly, for the school side, to get, Alec, in, oh, you know, in any type of world where we just really, oh, really banked on 1.7 million dollars in new revenues and, and just once envisioning a point, oh, where that extra revenue stream would just be baked in and not continue to grow, if that makes sense.
I, I understand the question. I don't, I can't really say. I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I mean, others, it might be more familiar with the school financing than me.
Oh, it's so early on, but, and then, Alec, along the same lines, one of the things, and I was actually on the school committee when, oh, oh, we actually came up with the 70-30 split in one, Alec, and it's worked out very well, in my opinion. But one of the deficiencies in it, in my opinion, that has been exploited to the nines over the years, Alec, is the fact that there's this rough agreement. There's this agreement in principle, but, oh, you know, and there's an understanding, but there's really no, oh, there's really, oh, oh, but no actual agreement to it. So it's all based on relationships and interpretations. Alec, as we move forward in this new world, oh, I would like, oh, eventually, and I know it won't happen this year and, oh, it probably won't happen even next year, but Alec, I would really like to see a process where we might be able to really, like, memorialize what, Alec, exactly the 70-30 split means and what revenues go in it. Oh, revenues are out of it and, you know, and, I mean, obviously, Doug, Biz, I mean, we want you here forever. I mean, and, and I'm not just saying that, but just so, oh, you know, oh, well, the agreement really doesn't depend on the people, oh, we're understanding it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, I can, I can take that, too. We were at one point, Mike, prior to, you know, some of the, the issues that happened a year, year and a half ago, I was working on the financial principles for the town. And this, the 70-30 split was certainly included. Chairman Pomfrey from the finance committee has reached out several times. I did ask that we kind of put it, not on the back burner, but I said, let's let Doug and Biz get through, you know, this, this first budget here and then, you know, we can look at it at some point, maybe, you know, starting July 1 or something like that. That becomes a goal and objective for, for the administration for, for next year, I think, to really kind of tier-point hammer these, these, you know, principles that we have, actually, you know, memorialize them and make them, you know, stick, make them policy, you know? So, yeah, it's definitely, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we've talked about this and it's something that, you know, we've put down towards, you know, next year, get you through this process now.
And, and I, I thank you and I agree with that. And I, I guess to play devil's advocate, though, the thing that I worry about is if something is really, you know, signed in blue ink and we're locked in.
There's no deviation.
And my fear is if we get hit with some, for whatever reason, a huge deficit, but we're locked into giving 70% of revenue for the schools, which adds to their spending, that's not closing our gap and we're stuck.
So I will, so I will tell you the, the agreement in principle, when it, when it was, because me and Mike were actually on the, on the FinCon when we did it. You know, it, it came about as, I think, eight straight years of level funding for the schools. And it was a way of, of trying to ensure that there was going to be, you know, if we saw an increase in revenue, the school is going to get a part of it. But it was always, it was always a, an agreement. It was never anything written down, but it was always the, the intent of it was after all of the joint expenses, expenses were taken into account, and that includes now joint expenses, utilities and everything else, what was left in that number was that 70-30 split. But conversely, the same agreement was, if the town were to go through a rough financial pack, patch, the school would take the hit on 70% and the town would, would take 30. So that was the agreement in principle at the time.
I think that's important.
Yeah.
So which is my point, is, is the entire, you know, agreement be weighed out with, with the proper language that, that actually indicates exactly what Richard's saying?
Well, everyone who was involved in it have, has really moved on.
There's only a few of us. Yeah, I think you were on school committee at the time, right? Yeah, so, yeah.
No, that, that makes sense. And, and so they do the flip side of what I said earlier, the benefit of it, and, you know, several of us were at MMA this year. There was a workshop on sort of financial best practices and one of the things they talked about, they didn't use the word split, but this concept of formulas, agreements, so that early on, there's predictability on sharing revenues for the school and town.
A little less internal, potential fighting, yeah.
Right. So that's, so that's, you know, it is a best practice, it's just we, we want to make sure we.
And that's where it came from.
Right.
So that people could predict, you know, and really, you know, budget themselves going forward, to have an idea anyway.
Right.
One of my questions, obviously, you know, we're budgeting conservatively with the, or maybe we're not, on the new growth. Do we have any indication that our new growth might be more than the 250,000?
So I know this was the number that the assessor felt comfortable with. I don't remember, Biz, if you have any other.
This was their recommendation of the assessor, and we have to provide the reference.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean.
Just the interest in how we have to provide the pressure assessment.
Right. I mean, you know, believe me, we're like, we pressed. One of the things we've also talked a bit about, too, is, you know, when can we start counting on some of the marijuana revenue coming in? And it's, as you know, we don't have a business actually open yet.
Yep.
So we have to wait for the revenue to come in before we can ever actually even budget for it. So that will come in, but I, and I could certainly have Deb come in at a future meeting, but I know she felt comfortable with this.
Pretty comfortable with that number.
So I, I think going forward, Doug, at least for the rest of this process, I think maybe continue to put the FY '21 budget on the agenda for every, every meeting, just so that we can go back to it at some point if we have to, if there's questions or if there's changes to it or updates. I, I do appreciate you putting the personnel, you know, wish list, I guess, on there. A lot of those positions that we've talked about for a lot of years.
For a long time.
And at least, I, I think actually, one of those positions, we funded a few years ago. I don't know what happened to it, the regulatory administrative assistant.
Oh, I saw that.
That was funded a few years ago.
And then it was not.
And then it disappeared.
Yeah.
So.
It wasn't, the position wasn't hired and it disappeared the next year.
So we were on the finance committee at the time and I think initially, what the idea was, it was going to take away the, the salaries of the regulatory secretaries within those, those committees and it got voted down at town meeting, but they still voted in the regulatory secretary, you know, as a $20,000, I think, position or whatever, 19 hours a week, whatever it was.
And, you know, I heard a little bit about it.
Didn't we pile that, pile that into?
Might have gone into the building department.
Into rent, hiring Massey?
No, this was, this was separate.
Megan Fontaine was hired.
We were looking to, no, so we were looking to eliminate the, the stipends for the secretaries on the, on the zoning and the planning, taking those revenues to help offset the regulatory and bring a, a part-time person in.
And it's a good point because what, that position is not the person who's taking the minutes at the meeting. This is someone that's here during business hours.
Right. And that position we were talking about was, part of their duties were going to be taking the minutes at the zoning and the planning, but also be available on a limited basis during regular hours, so we had someone in here.
So it's, it's just something we need to, you know, we're going to come up with some recommendations and hopefully, at some point in the future, fund it, but it's, I can't stress it enough. I mean, I personally have people coming into my office who have issues to no fault of anyone. It's not the board's fault, you know, but there's just no one available to answer questions because everybody's working and they're volunteers and, and that's hard for the, for the applicant, which is understandable.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions for Doug?
I know. Thank you, Doug. This is awesome.
Great job.
No, that's, I thank you. Maybe what we'll do for a future, some of those future items, I'll highlight things that change and then maybe for a few of the budgets that did have swings for whatever reason, I'll, I'll kind of highlight some of those more important changes so there's no surprises. And certainly, if you have any questions as you're going through this, just shoot me an email and I'll make sure to hit that at the next, at the next selectman's meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Not to keep going back to the 70-30 split, but do a lot of the surrounding towns do that as well?
You know, there's some, there's some that do. I don't know that they call it 70-30.
Some type of a.
They have an agreement.
Yeah.
But I know that there's towns, some surrounding us, that, that don't have an agreement in place and it becomes a point of contention.
Free for all every year.
Every year when they go to the budget process. So I think to that point, you know, we were smart to, to go down this path, you know, to have an idea of what you can expect, you know, out of the budget, but certainly, an open conversation.
Because it took a lot of, it took a lot of, I actually think it, it took a lot of the internal issues, you know, and I think as we have seen and Peter talked about it, I think this was one more step in trying to build better relations between all the department heads. So everyone kind of knew, you know, whether they were happy with it or not, but everyone kind of knew what, what was going to happen, you know? So I think it just helped at the time with building relationships between departments and giving more, a better idea of where each department was going to be.
And I think it still helps.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's the way to go, but, but I think having the personalities that we have in the position now, I, I think that you'll probably see a more cooperative back and forth between, between the two, between this office and the superintendent's office as well. Obviously, that's not, you know, written down anywhere specifically, but, you know, knowing the two of you guys, I think you guys will easily find a way to work together and work out whatever, you know, your needs are, so.
And Biz and Jane talk to each other all the time, every week.
Every day. I know. I keep hearing great things about you guys, so.
So it's good.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Doug, I don't know, you want to stay there for?
Yeah, I'll just stay here.
For your closing comments?
Uh, yes, actually, I do have a few things.
All right. Nothing under old, other old new business, other old business, not reasonably anticipated?
Nope. No, sorry.
All right. Talking to you, Doug.
Sorry.
You're, you're out of sorts. You're over there.
I know, I know. Well, I was just thinking, too, I shouldn't have shut the projector down because there's something I could have showed you online, but it's going to take a few minutes.
Okay. So town administrators report and correspondence.
Yep. If this stops what it's doing and I'm able to restart it, I might come back to the first one, which is, we now have on the town website, the new board and committee database, which I emailed you earlier. It really is, it's fantastic. So, you know, excuse me, well, I brought the idea forward. It was, you know, town clerk and the IT director, Donna and Gina, were the ones who actually did all the work and got it done. Gina were the ones who actually did all the work and got it done, so it's great, and I think residents are going to find it helpful, if either they want to find out, you know, who to contact, or better yet, where are their vacancies, where they might want to be interested in joining a committee, now they'll be able to tell, so I encourage anybody from the public, go to the town website, just click Boards and Committees, and I might be able to even get it back on and come back to this again. While that's warming up, I just wanted to explain what happened at a meeting that I said was going to happen at our last selectmen's meeting, which was to meet with the architect and OPM for the school building project to get into permitting, also, again, kind of tails back to the staffing needs that we talked about earlier, it was a very, very effective meeting, and what we learned was, there will likely be a variance that will be needed, rather than mess with setbacks and be closer to any property line or any abutters, they're looking at a potential variance for the size of the parking spaces in the parking lot, to kind of just get the right room, so, should really be no big deal, but we wanted to make sure, you know, everybody was sort of in alignment, we also had our attorney on the phone, so he was helpful to clarify some of that. There's going to also be some conservation issues, I didn't realize that the stream or the river actually flows right underneath.
Flows underneath.
I didn't, yeah, realize that, so there's some related issues there, but, you know, shouldn't be any problems, but it just has to be coordinated.
In our old middle school, you could actually go in the old weight room and actually see the river running underneath.
Really?
Yep.
I didn't know that.
Sometimes it ran into the gym.
I was never in there.
Sometimes it did.
I was never in there, so I wouldn't know it.
Yeah, no, we know.
I do have the website up, so I'll just show you real quick, there's a town homepage, rockland-ma.gov, if you click Boards and Committees, it's going to bring you to this new site, so if you want to see who's on the Board of Library Trustees, these are all the people, we might actually have a library trustee here, you can click on that person, and you can even see their timeline, you know, when they were appointed, when their term is up, et cetera, and then, as I was indicating earlier, some people might want to say, ah, where are their vacancies, let's look at one here, Community Preservation Committee, you know, someone has expired, they haven't gotten sworn in yet, there's one vacancy there, conservation, et cetera, and this is also a work in progress, we wanted to get it up and running, so, some of these things might be, the person was appointed, they forgot to get sworn in, this helps with that, this helps, you know, Donna and everybody else understand where things are at, so if people are interested, they can, you know, look at the Finance Committee, see that the, see who the chairman is, Mr. Pumphrey, and you can click on that, see when the term ends, so, just that I highlight that.
It's as full as that board, I think, has ever been, 12 members.
Yeah, it's a big committee.
Yeah, we're up there, I think.
It's a large committee.
Do we have 13?
I think maybe, but.
Couple other things, we got a formal letter from Verizon for their cable TV contract, it's referred to as like a 626 letter, I think refers to a part of the federal statute relating to cable TV licensing, their contract expires in July of 2022, you got to start it a couple of years ahead of time, so, working with Attorney Kenny from Clifford and Kenny to go through that process, we reserve our rights under the formal process, it's actually very interesting, I'll do a very quick digression on this, so when I was on the Cape, it was only Comcast, so essentially a monopoly, Verizon, there's no FiOS on the Cape, they won't go over the canal or under the canal, it just doesn't make financial sense for them, so it tended to be a very kind of adversarial relationship and dynamic when negotiating the cable contracts with all the towns, it was just very difficult, so I just assumed that's the way it was here, talking to Attorney Kenny, it really does not seem to be the way here, and I wonder if it's because there's a little more competition, you have Verizon and Comcast, I'm just guessing, but we're hopeful, there's a, you're allowed to have an informal process that can go concurrent with a formal process, so hopefully, while we reserve our rights formally, we can just get it done informally, and I think our cable TV group that does it here does an outstanding job, and the meetings are all done really well. I'm not going to talk about the governor's budget or free cash, because we already talked about that in the budget presentation, earlier today, we had security training, I mentioned this earlier, from 4:30 to 6:30, I won't go into too much detail, but I really just want to thank the Police Department, Lieutenant Ziole, you know, and his staff took two hours, it was a follow-up to an initial meeting we had, they talked about the whole Alice training method, which is what they do in the schools, and they tweaked it for this setting, and it's interesting, because it's such a, the principles are the same, but it's a very different building, this is much smaller, a bad guy could get from one end to the other and up and down a lot quicker than he could in a school, which is so much larger, but it was, I think, very effective, they told us ahead of time, change your clothes, you know, and we practiced barricading doors, and how to use intercoms, and how to respond to certain situations, so I'm very appreciative of the Police Department, they took their time to really help us, you know, we did have a relatively minor incident here, but that minor incident could have gone bad, and could have gone very bad, so, I think we're much better prepared now, and we're going to keep doing more training with the police in the future. John Heller and Jen were both able to get $9,000 in revenue from the state for some, you know, they advertised, you know, if there might be, you know, accounts that people hadn't, you know, hadn't cashed, checks that hadn't cashed, et cetera, so they took the time to bring in a $9,000, it was outstanding, so I want to thank them for that. You may have seen some photos we put up on social media for a Veterans Breakfast up at the Senior Center on Monday, and what I thought was really great about that was, I knew about it, and that's how I was able to go, Vinnie, it was Vinnie's show, and there in the background was the Senior Center Director, or COA Director, Peg, wheeling and dealing in the kitchen, bringing out food and helping get it set up, and it just shows how wonderful it is having the Veterans Officer at the Senior Center, and Peg would never promote herself that she did this, but she was there helping with the breakfast, and it was really well received, I think everybody there was happy, so I'm especially pleased with the cooperation between those departments. Two other quick ones, we just got today a check for $1,500 from National Grid, which they're donating to Rockland Day, so I want to publicly thank National Grid for that, they reached out to us a while ago when we went to that live wire training, and they asked if there were any civic causes that they might be able to help donate to, so Rockland Day was the first thing we thought of, so, appreciative of that. And then the last thing I was going to mention, and Rich might want to chime in as well, we did have a big Charter Review Committee meeting last night, and one of the major items on the agenda was interviewing two professional firms to provide possible technical assistance to help with the Charter Review, that was funded at the last town meeting, so they interviewed two firms, UMass Boston Collins Institute and Paradigm Associates, and to make a long story short, the consensus of the committee was that they prefer to move ahead with UMass Boston Collins Institute, I'm fine with that, I think Rich is fine with that, I just, I wanted to bring it forward to you, because you're the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, this is spending town money that I think you guys should make sure you're comfortable with, so, I don't know if Rich wants to add anything to that, but I just wanted to make sure you were good with that before I followed up with UMass Boston, and I can give more input about kind of why they were thinking that way versus the other firm, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you want.
So I think, I think the feeling of the Committee was Paradigm Associate, you know, may specialize more in a lot of the recruiting end, and maybe not as much with a charter, and then another big factor was, UMass Boston is a state entity, so we don't have to worry about the state procurement rules with that, where it's like an intergovernmental contract, you can just go with them regardless of the dollar amount, so you could get started right away, Paradigm Associates is not a state entity, so we'd have to start from scratch procurement-wise, issue right an RFP, advertise the RFP, and in the end, they're probably the only two firms that would, you know, submit anyways, and the Committee got proposals from both of them, so, I think in a nutshell, that was where they were coming from.
Yeah, and it's, you know, when, during the presentation, it was, it was, became apparent that the Collins Center really kind of concentrates, they've done work with over 200 communities in the state doing charters, where Paradigm have done a handful of, and they're actually working with a couple of towns right now, but they don't have the same experience that the Collins Center does, the other thing, I think, the Collins Center brought a more team approach, they have some specific people within their group with specific skill sets that I think could be beneficial.
That's great. So I don't think I need a vote, but I just wanted to make sure you were all comfortable with that before I moved ahead. Okay.
Perfect.
Thanks. And that was all I had.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Selectmen's Comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen.
Two weeks' no, I got nothing.
Amazing, color streak. Ms. Nyman.
I just want to remind everyone that next Friday, the 14th, is Kindness Day in Rockland. Did I steal yours?
You totally read it off my sheet.
You want to add to it?
She's, every week, every week she does this, she's the new Mullen.
So I just encourage everyone to pay it forward, or do something kind for someone else.
You hear that, Mr. Lufflin?
Yeah, yep.
Be nice to your members.
I'll think about it. Mr. Penny.
I have nothing.
Mr. Ryan.
I have twice as much, I've been kind of a, the weather's been great, for everybody to get outside, this has been the best winter we've had in a few years, and be careful driving around out there, because there'll be more kids and more people walking the streets, and they still get stuck about 5 o'clock a little after, and be safe, that's all. Love you guys.
Thank you, and, you know, honestly, I don't have much other, I was just going to remind everybody about Kindness Day on February 14th, we made the declaration last week to change it from Valentine's Day to Kindness Day, so Mike, you're off the hook for Valentine's Day.
No, I still got to do something.
But, yeah, once again, Kara, stealing my thunder, but, Kindness Day for Memorial Park School kids who have worked hard, and they're spreading the word, they've been out there, they recorded a song last week at WRPS, that'll be, I'm sure, a number one hit, just take Kara's point, pay it forward, it's a lot easier to be kind, so, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor, Mr. Mullen.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Penny.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And myself, thank you, good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Beautiful.